Good morning. It's Tuesday, May 21st, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your vine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us dear Lord wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. All right, and we've got minutes.
Move to approve the minutes from the May 14th meeting and the May 15th special meeting.
Second?
Move to second. Any discussion? Changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Open up public comment regarding any of the pending resolutions we have on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and then proceed with our resolutions. We have Dan Becker over the County Engineers' Office. Good morning.
Good morning. I've got one resolution for your consideration today.
I have two.
Okay, I have two. I was gonna do one first, and then I'll do the other one. Thank you, Rhonda.
Good save there, Dan.
The first resolution is approving change order number one for the 2024 Friends World Road Improvement Project. And then the second is necessity close various roads throughout the county for projects.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Dan. Holly Muirin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have three new hires, two at sanitary, one at job and family services, two promotions, one in building, one in sanitary, nine rate increases, one at solid waste district, three at job and family services, three at OOA, one in finance, and one at county home, one suspension in transit, four resignations, one in transit, two in sanitary, and one in job and family services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning, Brett.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have eleven resolutions for you guys today, so we'll jump right into it. The first one is amending our appropriations, so increase or decrease of appropriations. We have a little bit of both this time. Our second resolution is transferring of appropriations. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. We have a whole slew of little things in here for the most part, not a whole lot that's too large there. Our fourth resolution is revenue adjustments. We had Family First Council accidentally had a check that got deposited into their wrong fund, so. Our fifth resolution is cash transfers. Of note here, we have one for $250,000 coming from Dave Wadsworth and the Auto Title Fund over to the sheriffs for the shooting range. Thank you, Dave. Our sixth resolution is cash transfer for social services. This is just our standard move out for real estate tax levy that has been in place. Our seventh resolution is creating the Sheriff's Vehicle Technology Fund and authorizing appropriations. They had awarded a grant for $10,335. There is a matching component for this, for about $2,500, and this is for new cradles for the sheriff's cruisers. The eighth resolution is submission of the Felony Delinquent Care and Reclaim Grant for juvenile probate. And that's for fiscal year '25. Our ninth resolution is the authorization of the Emergency Management Agency to add a new utility trailer and remove the old one as excess property. Our tenth resolution is expenses for county officials. Nothing out of state this time. And then finally, we come to the end of my show with our eleventh and final resolution for weekly bills in the amount of $726,854.2.
Move to approve the eleven resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Brett. Thank you. Next, oh, I guess Matt Springer.
Switching up a little bit. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have two resolutions for your consideration. The first one is for the award of McDAC levy funds for the program year 2024 through 2025. The total amount of the award would total $1,810,307.54. This award seven difference, police departments, as well as our drug task force as this next round. The second resolution is for new benefit plan consulting services. We went through a pretty extensive process of screening proposals and are recommending that the Fideli Group be awarded the next contract for a two-year period beginning June 1st of this year, continuing through May 31st of 2026.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that that was universally, the division of monies for McDAC was universally voted on by the McDAC board with the priorities being first, the drug task force, and secondly, the SRO officers.
All right, great. Very good. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, department updates. Richard Delsen, our Chief Building Official. How are you?
Good morning. I'm good. How are you? Starting off on page one, value of construction. This April was down quite a bit, down 33% from last April. But yet, the year-to-date, the value is still up 9%, so that's pretty good. It was kind of strange, the commercial and the residential flip-flop as far as the activity. But, and the average cost for new homes jumped up to $471,000, bringing the year-to-date average up to $405,000. It was $368,000 last month.
Yeah.
So that's a pretty good, pretty big jump. New home starts in April was pretty strong at 42, so it's still pretty much average, though, for April. But the year-to-date starts of 116 is about 10 less than average. Moving on to page two, shows our April revenue down 17% compared to last April. Page three shows our total year-to-date revenue is down 7% compared to this time last year. Page four, residential permits issued by township for April and year-to-date. And page five provides commercial permits also issued by township for April and year-to-date. And page five is, or page six, last page, gives more detail on the commercial work that was permitted in April. Other than that, the department, we're doing good. Our review times remain good, two to three days for residential and 16 to 20 days for commercial. It's easier when there's less coming in. And we do have an interview for a building inspector on Thursday that we're pretty hopeful. That'll be a nice thing if we get that person on board. That's all we have.
Questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nicole? Nicely with the Board of Elections. Good morning.
So it's been, we've had two elections since we did our last department update. We had great turnout for the November 2023. We had 57% turnout, which is about double for an odd-year election, so that was great. In large part, that was due to the two-state issues on the ballot. Then we had our March primary election. We had 27% turnout, which is lower than we'd like to see, of course, but it is pretty average for a primary election. The deadline to file for the August special election has come and gone, and we did not have any filings in Medina County or in any of our neighboring counties with overlapping districts in Medina County. So, excuse me, with the March primary wrapped up and no August special to prepare for, we're taking this time to begin preparing for November, as well as spend some time getting out into the community. So, just in May, we've had the opportunity to be the keynote speaker at Law Day for the Medina County Bar Association. And we were the guest speakers last week at Friends in Focus. And we, last week, we also met up with the Secretary of State, Frank LaRose, at Cloverleaf High School to support the promotion of grads vote and youth at the booth program. So we already have a pretty busy summer and fall planned, but if anyone has any groups, organizations that would benefit from having the BOE come and speak with them, or even come to the Board of Elections, I know some Girl Scout troops, maybe Boy Scout troops, that would benefit from doing a tour there. Have them call our office, and we can maybe see if we can set up a time to have a meeting or to do a tour. So as we look towards November, some important dates and information to remember. Questions and issues, local questions and issues filing deadline is August 7th at 4:00 p.m. Absentee applications for the November general election, you can start sending those in anytime now. As of this morning, we have 500 applications already. Those are in our system, and anybody that has submitted an application can start checking the status of those applications online right now on our website. Yesterday, the Ohio Controlling Board approved the Secretary of State's request for money to do a year, or a statewide absentee ballot application mailing, as well as a PSA campaign to support the mailing. We don't have any word yet as to when those mailings will begin. But in past years, there's kind of been a two-wave process with those mailings, one before the close of registration, so probably mid-August, maybe. Or, I'm sorry, mid-September, that would be. And then one after the close of registration, so second to third week in October, to catch anybody that registered later, so they can get those people as well. So, people can still call in and request those applications be mailed to them, but also just wanted to mention that so that residents know that the Secretary of State will be sending out those applications to all registered voters, and so they can send those in when they receive those as well. Last date of register for the November 5th general election will be October 7th. Military and overseas ballots will begin going out on September 20th. And regular absentee ballots and early voting begin on October 8th. For more information about important dates and voter registration, visit voteohio.gov. And as we prepare for November, we're looking into PEO recruitment, or, I'm sorry, poll worker recruitment. Precinct election officials, PEO, that's, sorry. We know that we're gonna need a lot more precinct election officials than usual, just because we're expecting high turnout. So we'll need to staff all of our polling locations to full capacity, as well as have a full roster of trained poll workers ready to go on Election Day to staff or to fill in for any call-offs or no-shows that day. We're also going to need full part-time staff and early voting staff to to help handle the high turnout for early voting and for the expected absentee mail influx as well. And that's pretty much all I have.
Well, I guess with all the expenses for a presidential election, the primary being only 27%, and no August election does help budgets, didn't have as much mail in the spring as we originally anticipated budget time, so both those things will help for the budget in November.
Yeah. And then one of the reasons Nicole's here is we started a communications regarding the need for poll workers, for election officials and train. And in the past, the county commissioners have passed a resolution, I think the last number of general elections, which allow our employees to serve as those volunteer positions, but they would also receive their wages for that day, for volunteering and being a vote. So I brought it up so that we would, might want to discuss that and maybe discuss a resolution similarly for this time, so we know there is gonna be higher demand. As I understand, too, that, that the, well, it's all about training. I know there's a greater concern about election security and the processes, and there's an increase in requirements for training. And I think this gives them the opportunity to at least have cadre of people that they can count on and then start going through the necessary training to deal with the election.
And we have a number of mandates where, so if we move an employee from one department to another for a day or two, we have mandates where we have to have the department have enough.
Well, yeah, actually, that's our provision in there in the past, and it's still in there, that the supervisor of the department determines whether that employee can, whether they can staff it or not. Smaller departments obviously don't have the latitude for some of their workers to be able to go and spend a whole day elsewhere. But I think we need to give enough notice to the supervisors so that they know that their intention is that they'll have to make sure they've got, in terms of scheduling and vacations and everything, that they have the capacity to provide services that day without closing down. So I just thought we'll bring it up for discussion next week.
Yep, that makes sense.
We appreciate that very much. Anything, any help that any, that the commissioners and any departments can give us, we very much appreciate.
Yeah, but the tough part is because of the length of the day and obviously when you get a certain age to work, typically, what, is it a 14, 16-hour day, pretty much?
Yeah.
And frankly, there's, you know, let's face it, even when you're young, it's kind of hard to do that long. You get older, 16-hour days, or, that's a long time, and don't do half-days. So I think all the more important we make sure we've got people be able to staff those, provide the staffing for that, that are, that have been able to go through the training and make sure that our, certainly that the processes are followed, that the tasks are done completely, and that the elections are done in accordance, in accordance with the law and are error, hopefully, error-free. So.
Makes sense. Yep, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, well, we'll bring that up for discussion next week.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks. Commissioner's Resolution. We have an application, excuse me, accepting the modifications to the Medina County Thoroughfare Plan proposed project list as recommended by the Medina Area Transportation Task Force. Brought this up last week during discussion. This is one that the task force met with members, representatives from the townships and Medina City, as well as the county highway engineer, and unanimously approved making the changes to that thoroughfare plan. Move to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, well, I think we talked about it last week, but I'm glad they were able to kind of take a closer look at this. I think this opens up the opportunity for, you know, additional things to happen that are probably more relevant in 2024 times than they were back when the, when the decisions were initially made, so.
Drawing a line on a map 21 years ago, saying, hey, let's put a road through this way, may not make as much sense now.
Well, my, my house was a bypass on some of those maps, too, so. Particularly open to the change, I guess.
Yeah, characterize this for economic development corporation as housekeeping.
Right.
We need to make sure we get, but some of those that are actually in the development community thanked us for being able to do this. Because this is what, property, and this is an area that's been of long concern and not been able to move past this idea that it's gonna be a thoroughfare.
Right.
And with taking this official action along with the city of Medina and the two townships just enables the property owner and the communities to move forward with the appropriate development in that area, as well as our Park District who has an interest in this.
Yep.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Now open up for public comment. I knew you'd be first. Come on up forward. Please stick your name in. An address for the record, please.
Good morning. Mark Frederick, 6146 West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio. United States of America, continent North America, planet Earth, Milky Way Solar System, you know the game. Everybody knows who I am while I'm here. Miss, it's kind of sad we don't have a good audience here from Lafayette today. That's why I'm here. And I'd also say, you guys have been doing pretty good. I haven't had to been here and do my return with remediation or review, so that's a compliment to the commissioners for the moment.
Can you pull the mic to you?
To me?
Yeah, yeah.
Towards it that way, they get them.
There we go. They're not hearing you.
Oh, they're not hearing me? Okay. Usually, the deaf people hear me. But meanwhile, in my Lafayette township, there's some things going on that I think we need to bring to public attention, rather important, too. If we get things out in the open, then everybody kind of knows what's going on. I'm not too sure if you're aware of it, but that's why I'm here. And as I said, I'm disappointed we don't have more Lafayette residents here. As far as I see it, it's time to air out some dirty laundry for Lafayette Township, you know? Got to get it right, you guys. Lafayette's dirty laundry.
Okay.
We have people in our township, three trustees to be exact, and I have witnessed some pretty stupid stuff happening there, and that's why I'm here to talk about it. I think if we get in the open and enough people are aware of it, we can fix this before it gets too far out of hand. It's important that we have public awareness. As I've always said, the squeaky wheel, that's for Richard Zolmanek, the old English teacher to me, gets the grease. I intend to do some greasing. A speech, too, by the way. Now, I know, I don't have a doctorate in economics, and, Hammy, I know you got your doctorate, but I do know this, that if you have $400,000 in township money, half a mil, and you put it into account that gets zero interest, not getting anything. If you took that same $400,000 and put it in, and I'll even name names, I'm not afraid of that. You put it into Huntington, they'll give the township 3%. Well, even without an economic doctorate, you know that $400,000 times 3% is $12,000 a year. $12,000 a year. Compounded, it gets to be worse. You know, it's pretty sad that the sheeple aren't aware of what's going on over there. And I kind of keep an eye on things. It's kind of nice to be retired and able to do so. Well, anyhow, in our township, Tweely Dee, and Tweely Dum went right along with them on the vote, they put that $400,000 into Westfield Bank, getting zero interest. And that's waste. That's stupid. And we need to keep an eye on this kind of activity. And you guys always like to have, keep an eye on you, you know? Well, just to let you know I'm watching you. In the meantime, my township is farting around with pancake breakfast for the firemen, and they're throwing $12,000 away over here. It's a missed, lost opportunity, as far as I see, for some easy money. By the way, I'm almost done. These, three generations, grandpa had them, dad had them, I have them. We go back to Medina County over 100 years to root company for supplies and stuff. And I just thought I'd throw that in at the end. Well, guess what? Happy Memorial Day. You can't fix stupid, and it's too bad that stupidity is a criminal.
Mr. Frederick, I am going to take issue with you calling the elected officials of Lafayette stupid because there are rules that the townships have to follow financially, and one of them is to have depository contracts that are bid out every five years. They are not allowed to just weekly decide to move their money from one bank to the other based on interest rates. They have to have actual legal depository contracts in place, and it's a legal process that the township has to go through. So although you may look at a bank weekly and think, oh, this rate is doing good, if they don't have a depository contract in place with that bank, they legally cannot move the money there. So, since you had, you know, made some comments about stupidity, I want you to make, make you aware that there are laws that these elected officials do have to follow.
Okay, well, I'm gonna check into it, you know, I will.
You sure should.
I absolutely will. And my guess is that there was no bidding at all. But I will check into it. So that could compound the stupidity. Kind of nice to see you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Do you have something, sir, or?
I sure do.
Okay. Want to come forward, please?
My name is Roger Rose. I'm at 913 Oak Hill Drive in Brunswick Hills. I'm a widower and live alone, and I have two water bills here. One from February 29th and one from April 30th shows zero gallons of water used. And I received a bill for $105.83 and $106.50, and I'm not using any water. I don't understand the logic.
Well, actually, we just had discussion earlier this morning. I met with Jeremy Senko, who's our sanitary engineer, and we're reviewing the data. There is no water system that we are aware of that doesn't have a minimum billing regarding usage. And there is a, every system has to be in place. It has to be, whether you're using the water or not, there's a minimum gage. I'm up in Brunswick, I have a minimum, city of Cleveland, that we have to pay, whether I'm using water there. I've got a condo left over when I was a legislator down in Columbus, Gehanna, that I pay, and I don't use water, any water there, more typically not, and there's a minimum. So we're, we are looking at the data. We are looking at the information. We'd be glad to review your bills, make sure that they were fair, and that they do reflect what appropriate charges are. And be glad to, if you want to talk further with either Chris Jacob or Jeremy Senko, be glad to go over that detail with you.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not questioning the validity of it. I'm questioning, I pay the same sewer charge, living alone, and I'm only here half the year because I'm a snowbird, as to the person that lives down the street and has four kids.
Correct, right.
So they're using considerable amount more water.
Yeah.
I would think that the sewer charge should reflect the consumption of water, not just a flat charge. And I know there are other communities that base the sewer charge on the water usage.
Well, when a utility has both the water and the sewer as part of their department, it's a lot easier to do it than when they're separate. Because you're right, there's a way to actually evaluate. But every system goes through its charges and evaluates. The infrastructure still has to be in place. Whether you use it or not, it adds value to your property, whether you use it or not. If you were going to sell it, and you said, hey, I've got a water system, and I've got, you know, I've got a public sewer system, that actually improves the value of the property.
I understand completely. What I'm saying is that it's unfair to charge me the same as somebody that uses four times or 10 times as much water as I do.
Well, the water usage, even if it's connected to the sewer, is still the water coming in from the utility, right? So you're paying, you're paying, that would be reflected in the water bill. That wouldn't be reflected in the sewer bill. I think that's, because when it comes in from, from the, from the road, that's, the consumption is what's measured. You pay the consumption rate for the water bill. Your, I think your issue is the, the flat rate that you pay even when you're below the minimum usage, right? But for a family of four, they're well in excess, knowing as a family of four, well in excess of the, of the minimums that are paid for the people who are, who are under that threshold. If you look there, we do have a flat fee for that regardless of usage. And then we have equivalent units as people start to go up.
Which is reflected in the water bill, not the sewer bill.
Actually, in the sewer bill.
Oh, is it? Okay.
We have a commercial or industrial use. We do have estimated units that we do charge extra. Let's face it, even though you have a six-inch or 12-inch line coming in, or a nine-inch, or whatever size line into a, into a facility, a laundromat's gonna produce a whole lot more sewage, as well as some other commercial activity. A restaurant will produce a whole lot more than, than a house. And so they do pay an additional amount based upon that usage. So we try to use, obviously, their estimated capacity if they are tied into our water system, determine how much water they're using to estimate what that'll be. But we can't take a, take a look, but there's, if you could show me a public system out there that doesn't have a minimum charge?
Well, the minimum charge isn't the question.
Yeah.
It's, it's the charge that I'm paying
Right.
for a sewer that I'm not using when somebody else is using it a whole lot more than I am.
Understand, understand. But we have to set that, that bar, that minimum usage somewhere. And the question comes down to, in terms of the process of the system, is, and you're saying, you know, in terms of, you're using here, they're using there, but we're bidding both the same charges.
So basically, to paraphrase what you're saying,
Yeah.
there's no distinction among residential users. A residential user is a residential user.
Typically not. Would you, is that correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah. There is no distinction.
But there is a distinction between commercial.
Oh, commercial and industrial, absolutely, absolutely, because there's even pre-treatment requirements for some of those facilities, where they actually, we have to demonstrate that they're not dumping into our wastewater treatment plant materials that we can't process, clean out, or whatever, and there's pretreatment requirements. But those are all based upon the contracts, our regulations. And for the residential, though, it's pretty much all the same. The question is, is every system, I mean, whether it's Wadsworth, or Lowdy, or any of the villages, they have similar charges, based on the same disparity between somebody that is a snowbird and only uses it a couple of times a year, and a family of four, or five, or six. and only uses it a couple times a year, and a family of four, or five, or six. They end up paying the same rate.
I guess my question would be, not the minimum charge, but the consumption charge. If, if you could tie it in, the sewer rate into it like other communities do, if, you know, you buy 100 gallons of water, you pay X number of dollars. If you use 1,000 gallons, you pay even more.
Well, Brunswick Hills, it happens that we do have both the water and the sewer combined, we know. But in Brunswick City, where, where the county provides sewer, they do not provide the water. You've got, in communities like in Wadsworth, whether they're combined, they can say, they can make that distinction. We have a problem making that distinction where we don't control the, necessarily the water system.
But you do in Brunswick Hills, you said, right?
We do in Brunswick Hills, this is a matter of circumstance. Well, we'd have to create a separate billing process for that, as an evaluation. But we are examining, Chris has asked for the data, we're going to be taking a look at that data. How many people fit into that, if you will, snowbird category, and see what, see what we can do. I know they typically ends up being seniors, individuals, that in prior years, we used to do, two decades ago, homestead exemptions, where we actually reduced the rate. And, but we've not been able to do that since the state changed the rules regarding homestead exemption. So we're, we will be examining this, you know, right now, we're just trying to look at the data. We still have to operate, and I'll say, we have to operate like a business without the profit. We have to pay all our bills, we can't take tax money and use it in our water system, we can't take tax money and use it in our sewer system, we, it has to pay for itself.
Understand that completely.
And so, we're going to operate it that way, and we're going to take a look and see how we can, I guess, more equitably deal with the issues of charges.
You know, I'm a widower, senior, fixed income, you know how that game is played, and prices certainly aren't going down.
Right. Well, and you brought this to our attention, but we, we also had a previous discussion, I think, that probably predates the discussion of taking a look at it. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's, that's something on the table that we're working with.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rose. We'll be in contact if you have more questions, either Chris Jacob, or certainly Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer. All right, we are working on it.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Open up for discussion session. Chris, do you have anything? Matt?
I do. So yesterday I had a meeting with a couple of members from the fair board, and Denise attended with me. So she's here in case you have any additional questions. So what they had, they had done their own survey. And the survey encompassed different things like revenues, a small overview of facilities, many things, you know, electronic resources, things of that nature. So they took their survey, and they had discussions with the entire fair board. And it comes, as far as facilities goes, their goals for the next seven years are listed here. So they've come back to us and said, they would like our help in, in accomplishing some of these tasks on this list. So, the original vision that I had for doing a, you know, a large RFQ on evaluating their entire 87 acres and, and seeing what would be great ideas going into the next 50 years, this would now be a more targeted RFQ. The only area that they have listed here that is more exploratory is reimagine the eastern side of the background, of the background to facilitate horse shows and stabling, as well as additional parking area. So now Denise has been challenged with the task of writing an RFQ that has some more targeted goals, which I think will be difficult, but not impossible to accomplish. So I wanted to know your feedback, and this is the direction that they're asking us to go, if you are still okay with us taking attempt at writing an RFQ.
So the eastern side, that's the area with the, it says, there's the junior fair horse stuff.
Do you remember the, like, the old racetrack where they used to do the harness racing? That whole side is east. And, and it is an underused portion of acreage. So we could still do an RFQ, but it would just be more limited in nature than I had originally proposed. And before we move forward, I just wanted to make sure you were okay with that, or if you had any questions.
But we're, and we're talking with, from, from the county's perspective, a similar cost profile to what we were?
I, I would think not, because really, going out the RFQ, we would completely take off the table of future fair sites, which probably would have been a significant expense to the RFQ. So I, I do think the cost would be way less than the original one. But it is, I, I mean, they, they talked about potentially, you know, having us have, you know, designs for their proposed building. That's really not our place in an RFQ at this point, because, you know, they can go right to an architect for that. We don't need an RFQ for a design for, you know, an upgrade of a building of that nature. So we explained that yesterday. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say, Denise?
Sure, so as we, as you're considering what direction, you know, you want to go, and, you know, if you want to consider data that is reliable and valid and statistically significant with a plan, you know, the, the plan that they presented us yesterday, while it is good data to consider and a good base point, it doesn't appear to be representative of the county.
How do you mean?
There were out of, so they, based on what they came up with yesterday, there were less than 300 surveys considered. So.
In different areas.
In different areas.
So many vendors, so many, yeah.
Right, so, so to me, it was, it was, while it is good baseline information, I'm not sure if it's statistically significant. With, with that in mind, if we, if you, as you're considering what direction, you know, you want to go, if you want to consider a, a plan that addresses just what I would define as the northeastern portion of the, of the fairgrounds, you know, one of my.
Consider the parking, yeah.
One of the questions that I have is, you know, the cascading effect of that. Because what you do in one, what you complete in one section, or strategically consider in one section of the fair, has the potential to impact the remaining acreage of the fair as well. And what does that cascading impact look like? So to me, you know, considering the northeast portion, it could be a good start to a strategic plan. It's not a comprehensive plan, but it, it focuses on one portion of the plan. But it doesn't, it, it may not, unless we decide we wanted to consider the cascading effect and how it impacts the remaining portions or acreage of the fair.
Well, that brings up a good point, because I, I don't, I mean, I think through this process, the one thing we don't want to do is use our judgment to replace the fair board's judgment. Because clearly, they have a plan of how they want to proceed.
This is their plan, yes.
So while I personally might think that the bigger picture approach makes the most sense, looking at, you know, their list, it, I mean, a lot of these, these items on here are, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the timeline, or what the, what the life expectancy is on some of these buildings that they're remodeling, or upgrading, or, you know, those kinds of things compared to starting fresh. So, but I, I wouldn't think the time when they're in the front end of a seven-year plan would be conducive to us doing a bigger picture analysis.
And, and, and this will be significantly cheaper than the, I want to, the original RFQ that we are going out for, so.
But it would still impact, but I guess my question is, does it still have the impact to the decisions they, they want to make? Will they be receptive to, and they're, they're, they want to see that done? I mean, it's on their list, obviously, okay.
So I, I, it's going to be a difficult task in an RFQ on these other items, but I definitely think an RFQ for the reimagine from east, the eastern side could be written. And again, we're going to have to take some time to see how we, we add these other things into an RFQ. But, but again, it, it would be a significantly smaller scope than the original.
But Denise, your point is, do we not get the full value out of that, that exercise if we don't?
It's, yes, it's a very targeted, limited scope, in my opinion. And, you know, not, not everyone may utilize that portion of the fair. It's not, I think, broad-based inclusive either. But if it's something that you're interested in, we can, you know, I can certainly support that.
So, yeah, and, and that's, I guess, I guess, back to the, I mean, it would be neat, Denise will be writing this, so we are putting a, a difficult task in front of her. But they've come to us and they've asked us for this specific one. So I would like attempt at at least writing it, and then having you look at it and see how you feel once you look at the RFQ.
And could we, not to create too much more work, but is there a way to do it, kind of in the alternative, where, you know, you, you kind of take a stab at what you think it should look like, and then maybe we, if there's?
We could do like an option A and an option B, absolutely. I'm sure you'll know which one I support.
Yeah, but, but I want to see that, too, because I, I think, to hear you describe it, that makes a lot of sense to me. But I just, I also don't, I, I want to preserve their autonomy, too, to make the decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We respect that.
And I, I do think the original one did, did have future areas. I, I think we just need to next that, they are, they are not interested in that, so.
But if this is where they're going to stay, then all the more reason for a bigger picture plan for that space.
Yeah, so essentially, the discussion about, if you will, kind of doing a reimagining with their capacity, what they want to do, something similar like in Holmes County, that's off the table. This is basically an investment in the current area. And trying to optimize its use in the future. And right now, you're focusing on that northeastern area, is to kind of reimagine how it could be better laid out.
Right, add additional parking, yes.
Yeah, well, whatever additional functions might be. What kind of consultant would you be looking for then?
There are, they do have a list of fair across the country. Like, the one that did their survey was from Iowa. So they do have a list of companies, but we, we would send out the RFQ as far as wide as we could. But they do have a list of fair-type analysis companies that they would like the RFQ to be sent to.
So basically, they look at the larger data and use what might attract individual customers, as well as, you know, capacity in terms of traffic, and all those other kind of, okay.
Right.
And events.
And so I, I am hoping, it's still a tough ask. I would love us to have a company buy the fair, so they could come see the flow. I don't know if this later the game, if that's going to be possible. But I, I think that that would be, if, if, if we could even get a company here for one or two days of the fair to see flow and how it's used.
So who's paying for the consultant?
That, that's, no, that, that would be the RFQ that we had talked about.
The county, I'm just making clear, commissioners would be paying for, we do an RFQ, they would be working for the county, or we would basically be, obviously, for the fair board, but we're, we're the ones that are covering the cost for it, is that the intent?
Yes, and that was the original, yeah, that was the original intent, this will just be a much smaller scope.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's where I come down on it, is we're, we've, we kind of had made, we'd, we'd offered the availability of some funding to help. We might have had a slightly different vision for what that could look like than they do. But if there's still a role for us to play, I'm happy to provide support.
So when we do that, we'll also have at least a budget estimate of how much that'll be.
Yes.
Depends on how imaginative Denise gets.
Yeah, and, and.
Well, what the funding might be for something limited.
And I was clear yesterday, you know, the three commissioners, we support the fair. And so they've made this request, and I would like at least an attempt at an RFQ to see what those look like.
I think it's a great one.
You have pretty high expectations for me, so.
Thank you for working on this.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to bring up, I had put in the packet some information. This is regarding our county vehicles. We have a list of the county vehicles under the commissioners that we have by, by department and by entity. And I want to kind of preview the context. More recently, we've started to review the need for county, has brought to our attention the evaluating the need for vehicles. Over a period of time, county vehicles have been acquired for a specific purpose, and those purposes no longer exist, yet the county vehicles seem to continue. And I'll give you an example, just a resolution that was passed in 2020. And the money that was used was primarily for, was COVID relief. But the purpose of the vehicles was for individual, for individuals of the department to go for training where they could socially distance. And so that, since they couldn't ride together, they basically got vehicles. Well, as we know, COVID's gone, we no longer have those, yet the vehicles remain. So the question comes, is when those also come to be replaced? Should they be replaced, and should they be used, well, how are they being used? And I'm proposing that we evaluate the, we inquire with our departments, the current usage of those vehicles. Likewise, I think that we'd also like to be able to, there's a technology that has been available and used by some of our departments to monitor their use, to make sure that they are for, that public vehicles are being used for public purposes. And, and it includes the installation of a GPS tracking system. Essentially, when a sanitary engineer's office, I think, our, as you know, the, our maintenance department already has this in place, and using some of it, if I recall correctly. Sanitary does, I'm sorry, sanitary does. But sanitary was getting a quote of $15.95 per vehicle, and an installation price of $72 first, and then, but you keep it in there. But they're able to track them and be able to, when they have various crews out, be able to identify, like, hey, if you're over there, come over here. And I think, I was thinking, was Stephen was talking about maintenance, about being able to, be also, be able to do that in terms of working with their individuals and use.
Kind of dispatching people.
Yeah, exactly, as well. And I think just that also monitors the use. We also know that if they're used for prob, for private, for private purposes, even though it's a public van, it is basically a taxable benefit, they're supposed to fill out a form that says, hey, they use so much, and they're basically, and there's a form, I guess, at the office that they would have to fill in. This would help the supervisors to monitor the use, making sure it's, they're used appropriately for county and for public purposes. So at this point, I, what I would propose, we start working on a policy to do this, and then, of course, communicate that to the various departments and officials.
I think some of the evaluation on some of the cars, some of the departments that have a lot of cars, I mean, just mileage alone, we could see that, you know, whether they're being used and, and whether they are essential. And everyone knows how much I love technology, but I, I think that technology, it's the wave of the future, and it's the direction that we should be heading.
Yeah, I like that, that thought on it, too, because I think the, the key of evaluating kind of the bigger picture of whether, you know, if the question is, do we need all of these vehicles at the county? That's probably a longer-term decision that has to be made. And I'd like to make that with the data of usage.
Yes.
And I don't want to create a lot of extra obstacles and, and requirements for people to track that in a way that isn't currently being done. And this does it without, without incident. It kind of happens in the background, it allows that tracking to happen, and then I think can, can better inform the decisions we make. You know, if multiple vehicles are being used by a department in a certain week, that's good information. But to, to know, to look at a list and say, well, this vehicle's used, and, and this vehicle's used, but they're used at different times, that could be, you know, one vehicle. So I think all of that information's going to be very helpful.
And, and to, and to your point, it is a long-term process, because, let's say, a department that has 10 vehicles, they easily can go down to eight vehicles. We have leases come up, so it is a long-term project that we have to wait till the leases come up.
Well, and I think we, I think we just really need to make it a strategic priority to kind of right-size the fleet and see where there are opportunities for, you know, that, that aren't maybe department-specific vehicles, but are just access to a county vehicle, that, that, that can kind of fill the need for some of these extra ones in specific departments. And so, you know, doing that, it, it may seem to some folks like that's a, that's a cut. I think really, what that does is it saves money that we can deploy in other ways in the county budget, which is, which is in everybody's interest.
And there will be some vehicles we would not want GPS on, such as our law enforcement.
Sure.
That will be excluded by category, for sure. So that only makes sense. And I know when I brought this up at the EMA, our emergency management, Carl DeForrest mentioned there's snowplows. They, you deserve, for that purpose, to keep track as to where their plows at. And if they need to call out, boom, they can kind of help deal with those situations. So it just makes, when you've got a fleet, to be able to better manage a fleet, if you know.
Right, and, and in, in this analysis, you know, we have a lot of, people go to conferences to Columbus and stuff like that. It might even be cost-effective to have a pool vehicle that, you know, people could sign out. Those conferences are normally at different times, and so then. Those conferences are normally at different times, and so then you save on the mileage, too. So, that, that needs to be looked at also.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll start that process, start developing the policies, as well as, um, I'll just say, uh, also allow for exemptions to that policy based upon, at this point, like, by category, or, uh, if an official asks us for exempting it for various reasons, maybe the coroner. Shouldn't, the people ought to know where the coroner's necessarily at, because they do investigate scenes, so, okay, that'd be like another category, or make sure that they're comfortable with whatever the monitoring is.
I just have a question, if we, to your knowledge, Chris, or maybe either of yours, has that, have we done that process before? Or have we just kind of responded to people's needs for vehicles with vehicles?
I don't think we've done a thorough review of it.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think this is, I think it's the right time for it.
Yep, time to do it, for sure.
Thanks.
Good, um, that's all I have.
Uh, then I guess I would move to go into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Weddick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, we, we would be, uh, actually, uh, adjourning for the day, but then we do have an adexation hearing here at eleven o'clock for Brunswick Hills Township to the city of Brunswick. Sarah, you're welcome to come back for that. No, no, we're good.